Muted until we're called on, then we'll have a question and answer session at the at the end after a couple of presenters. We're going to have NWR presenting tonight along with Lincoln Military Housing, Doc B, and of course Skipper at the end or during kind of parts of it. So we asked that throughout. Hold your questions if you can to the end and then we'll ask just basically unmute your microphone and try not to step on the the next person and we'll answer that question and then move on to the next. So without further ado, ladies and gentlemen, Captain Perkins.
Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second town hall of 2021. We've been learning our way through how we're doing things virtually. We're trying Zoom to see if if that offers an opportunity for additional family members to get involved and to get information or to ask questions. As we shift from major topic to major topic, we'll make sure that we do a Q and A, but you know, before we close out MWR, move on to the next thing. We'll make sure that all your questions are addressed and that's how we'll facilitate the agenda. So we got a couple of announcements on things that are going on and then Doc and I will talk about the the medical environment, kind of where things are locally, and then I'll talk quite a bit about the near term movement. We're finally starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel and what that's going to look like for COVID policy changes that are going to come soon. The vaccination and then and then a little bit about base events. So with that, Ms. Janie, I think you're up first for MWR. Over to you, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me? My mute? Okay. Well, NWR just started opening doors again. We we will open the theater this coming Saturday. It's going to be the first time back. And then Take Five is open. We're open Monday through Friday at 700 to 1300 and then Liberty Center, which is only for single sailors. It's opening. It's open already. Fitness has been open. And hopefully we'll be opening the Mirage Club. We have no date on that still. We have no date on the RV Park as well. The Auto Skills is open. So we're slowly opening our doors again for you guys. So any questions, concerns, please let us know. Any ideas? Let us know. So we could be back on board with all our MWR locations open again.
So one of the things that Team MWR does is they they execute our Captain's Cup sports program and although it's, you know, right now limited to active duty only when we're able to in alignment with other things that open to larger audiences. We'll expand that out, but we just concluded our first 2021 Captain's Cup event. And printed here is the championship of our Beanbag Toss and our own world famous Doc Bonian and the medical team took down the title for that. So we there are some things we're able to do.
Good job, Doc.
Yeah, there are some things we're able to do in a COVID environment that complies with the medical protocols that complies with the distancing and the cleaning. That's what we're turning the Captain's Cup into for the near term is those small events that we can do safely and still build somewhere else. So congratulations to Team Medical. Well fought out match against security, avenging an earlier loss in the season. Well done for that. So look forward to future Captain's Cup events. Very well done, Team MWR. And somebody from security says boo.
Mrs. Kelly, I wonder.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, Mrs. Kelly, I wonder whose side she's on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So well done to Team MWR. I gave them a challenge of creating a Captain's Cup event that we can actually and they came up with a good one and a lot of fun had by the teams that participated. So and well done to medical. So does anybody have any questions for for MWR, Janie, before we move on to to our next speaker?
Yes, we're doing a great job. They don't have questions for us. That's awesome.
Yeah, we'll probably get we'll probably get some in the comment section later. That always happens. Okay, thank you, Janie.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, next, we're going to have Matt from Lincoln Housing.
Good evening, El Centro, and thank you, Captain, for inviting me to this. Just a couple of things for you. I'm not going to take too much of your time. If we can remind residents, please to maintain, continue to maintain your backyards, especially now that it's starting to get a little warmer. As your grass grows and stuff like that, that could be an issue for rodents and even snakes. So we want to make sure that you all are maintaining your backyards, please, so we don't develop those problems. Another issue that we want to make sure that you're aware of is your trash bins. Please, soon after trash pickup, if you can bring your trash bins inside and store them. We all know that El Centro can get pretty windy sometimes, so that kind of helps the trash start to flow throughout the property. So if you can make sure you bring your trash bins no later than the next morning, that'd be greatly appreciated. And our offices are still closed, but our staff is still occupying the offices. So if you have any questions or concerns that you want to bring up, you can dial 760 352-2110 and the staff out there will help you with whatever you need. So we do have three events over the next three months that are going to be occurring in El Centro with our community services team. So March 11th, we're going to have the El Centro Spring Spring Fling that'll run from five to six, and that's a drive-through event, and the theme of that is supposed to be medieval. And dinner and dessert will be provided at that event. April 27th, there's going to be another El Centro Spring Expo that will also run five to six, and it'll be a drive-through event right by the district office there, and the theme for that will be green at home with dinner and dessert provided. And then Friday, May 7th, from three to five, our team will go out and I'm sorry, that's supposed to be an El Centro Military Spouse Appreciation Day from three to five. Our team is going to go out to the homes and they're going to deliver gifts to our military spouses. There's no requirement for y'all to be home. We'll drop them at the door. But that's going to be occurring at May on May 7th between three and five. So that's all I have for you all. I hope you all are healthy. And if you have any questions, I'll be standing by as well.
Thanks, Matt. And as we, you know, if the environment changes and I'm able to change the posture of the base, we'll keep in close comms so that we can discuss when it's appropriate to expand these out beyond drive-through events into the things that we were used to before, but I appreciate the info. Yeah, where are we with trouble calls? What is the current process that you'd like folks to use as far as urgent or, you know, or less less urgent? What's I know you said your office is closed. What do you have your your maintenance staff working at?
So our maintenance staff is still working. If there are trouble calls that you all need to have addressed, please make sure that you're using your app on your phone or calling the call center, call center, and they'll process your 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 service request. If it's urgent, we have on-call techs that will respond to those within a period of time. So we're still responding to those. You know, and I know that some people still may be not so comfortable with COVID going on, not coming into the homes. You know, if you submit a service request, we'll help our staff will help you walk through that if you're not comfortable. So more urgent requests, we're going to, we're going to, you know, work with you. We're going to want to get in there and address it because it could be a a safety health issue. So but we'll walk through that.
Okay, super. Thanks for the clarification. And then you earlier, you mentioned backyards and a couple of cleanliness issues. You know, so so my view is Lincoln is a partner on the base and already we've done a couple of joint inspections from the command side and from the Lincoln program management side. And I appreciate the tenants for correcting those deficiencies that we found, but we work hand in hand with the Lincoln leadership and my command staff to ensure that we're providing a safe and clean environment for everybody and that the tenants are upholding their part of the of the equation so that we're working together. So I appreciate your your team out here joining. It continues to do a great job and the rest of your team's been phenomenal.
Our El Centro families are awesome, so keep it up.
That's good. I listened to some of the challenges the other bases have and just happy we don't have that. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to bring to Mr. Matt's awareness or attention? Over.
Sir, this is Janie. One of the spouses asked if they MWR could do like an event yard sale for them to do a yard sale at their own home. So that does not fall under us. So I was wondering if there any possibility for families to do yard sales at Lincoln Housing?
So I'm going to have to look into that, Janie, and then I'll have the staff on all touch bases with Master Chief to get the name of that residence or our staff can reach out. So there are some areas, I mean, I think El Centro is included in that where garage sales and yard sales can occur. So but I need to verify that with the staff.
Can or cannot?
Can. I believe they can, yes.
Okay.
And that's another one of those where I, you know, as we've partnered with Lincoln to maximize our community events. That's one of those where I'd like to partner on how we get the most bang for the buck with a community yard sale type event. So that's a great comment. We'll take that for some action and some research offline and then get back to how we can do that. In the meantime, you know, before we can get to contact type events, there is a a unofficial community virtual bulletin board to self think that's available. Master Chief, you want to take that?
It's just a NAFL Central Buy, Sell, Trade page. It's open to anybody that lives or works on a base or has access to the base and you literally just go to the Book of Many Faces and search El Centro Buy, Sell, Trade Page. And we'll get you in there to sell stuff within it.
Yeah, and that's that's not an official thing, but it is something that a lot of folks use and that's available with COVID because you can make your make both parties to that transaction happy with the with the safety procedures. Okay, anybody else for Lincoln?
I think there's a there's a chat question. Sorry, it just came in. It says, when signing into that app for community, what should be putting into the slot? And that question is for that Buy, Sell, Trade page. It's asking, are you associated with a community? If so, what? Meaning, do you work on this base? And if you work on the base, what department do you work in? So in other words, like if I am a a strike sailor and I work on a base and say, yes, I work on a base, I belong to Strike Weapons or, you know, Strike Fighter Weapons or, you know, Weapons Department. That's what that question is asking. Are you associated with the community on base? It's when you join that that page to make sure we're screening that it really is for people that live and work on the space. There's two questions you have to ask. One, do you agree to the rules that are posted to it? And two, what, how are you associated with the base? So hope that answers your question in the chat just now.
Okay, if there's nothing else for Lincoln, thank you very much, Matt. I'll give it a couple of potatoes to make sure there's nothing else popping in.
And I'll stand by. I'll be I'll be monitoring this so in case something comes up.
Super. Thank you, sir. Okay, over to my section. A couple of quick kind of random announcements. First, from Mr. Remington, who is our environmental program manager on the base. We have an upcoming dumpster day, and for those not familiar with dumpster day, it's it's an opportunity to dispose of large household items that you've been, you know, struggling to get rid of. They don't fit in the trash bins, that kind of thing. We're going to bring that dumpster in the parking lot of the thrift shop. And that will be 24 to 28 March, so four days toward the end of March. And there's some limitations on what you can and can't use this for. No hazardous waste, no electrical waste, that type of thing. We'll post a flyer that explains it all. Michael's already developed that flyer. It's ready to go. We'll get that information out, but that came in kind of last second. And I wanted to to make sure you're aware that that's coming. And then more information will get provided to your military member and we'll get those posted out to tenants and residents as well. Okay, moving on, just a safety announcement. A reminder that the entire base from the entirety of the fence line to include, you know, some of our off-base areas that we own, the ranges and other areas that are federal property are no drone zones and around Christmas time, you know, we had a few families that that we maybe had procured some micro drones or small toys that fit into that classification. Basically, if it flies around on the airfield, it it has to be a military asset. It cannot be an individual personal product that you own. And there's a couple of safety reasons behind that. But just a public service announcement, a reminder that those things are, not only are they prohibited, but we've got a system onboard the base designed to protect ourselves that that may damage or disrupt the the functioning of that device. And I want to make sure that everybody is aware of that in advance. So, you know, what happened to my toy? Well, your toy was being used in an unauthorized area and now it doesn't work anymore. So we want to prevent that from happening. So we're letting you know a reminder of that policy. That's not a new policy, just a reminder that that exists. Okay, before I get into my COs, actually, no, I'll do this now. All right, I'm gonna, I made a promise a year ago when I took command that whenever you provided a CO suggestion box that I would reach out and reply back to you. So in the in the last year, I've gotten about 18 of them so far, and and only three have had had names and phone numbers associated with them. And all three of those, I've called and spoken to the individual and explained my 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 thought on the issue they raised. Or one of them was that was actually the one I read last month about the thanking the galley for the great breakfast that they've been providing to one of our detachments. And just thanking everyone for the hard work they do over in the galley. So I responded back to that individual and thanked him for providing that. But I've got another handful and they're all anonymous, so that that really limits how I can ensure that the person raising the issue gets their question answered to their satisfaction or understands why they maybe didn't have the full picture with their with the issue that they raised. So I'll just go through them and this limits my ability to provide answers to these types of forums, but we'll do the best we can. The first one is, I'll read the thing verbatim. It's really dark in housing. How can we get more lighting or streetlights to fix the ones that are out? So the great, great feedback. I don't know what I don't know, and I hadn't been out in that part of the housing area in a while at night and didn't know that we were having some challenges. So we had the team take a look. And there were two streetlights that were found out and they've both been identified and they're going to be corrected this week. So what I don't know if because that was anonymous, I don't know if the individual meant that there's insufficient number of lights. We did look at it. It looks okay from my perspective, safe to drive, safe for for people to walk. I will reiterate a policy that I that I put out about two months ago when we got our day of rain that if you're out walking your dog or if you're out doing physical activity and it's 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 dark out, have light colored or reflective clothing on you. I do when I go biking or if I'm running after hours. I've got some some yellow shirts and some reflective tape and whatnot that that I wear and that that will help with that. So I hope I answered the question about the streetlights. We're fixing the couple that we found that weren't functioning and thanks for bringing that to our attention. I got three questions related to to fitness and they all kind of tie into COVID. One of them did leave me a name and context. So Major Collins, I will contact you and give you the answer to your question. But one of them was, hey, people can swim in the pools, but how come we can't play basketball that even though it's the same people we we work with every day? So can we get back to playing basketball? I'm going to set that aside for a second. The next one was allowing access to to work on base as contractors but are also in the Navy Reserve. And and that's access to the gym, looking for that. That one's easy to answer because the policy on who's allowed to use what facilities is directed down from Admiral Grady Fleet Forces Commander. So four-star that is in charge of everything that happens in the continental United States has set out a policy that while we're in HBCon Charlie, facilities are limited to active duty only. I can't change it. I can I can make requests up chain, but they have not, none of the bases have been granted that particular permission. So the nuance to this particular one is if you're activated and serving your reserve function on the base, and there are a few of those that have done that, you have the authority to use the gym. When you're not activated and you're not in your reserve function and you just happen to be a reservist who is in your civilian role, the facility is not available to you. And it may seem funny, but that that's just what the policy is. Now I'll come back to policy and how we get out of this a little bit at the end. And the third question was that the use of spotters should be allowed by by the by people who work out. Spotters is an important safety performance and regardless of the weight being lifted and and repetition without spotters can 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 lead to injury. So that goes with the basketball question. So the reality of it is while we're in HBCon Charlie, there are specific policy decisions about gatherings, about close contact and about people being near each other. And that's to protect everybody. And there are certain things that are prohibited activities and certain things that we have the ability to put safety procedures in place to to mitigate that. Spotters was one of those specified things that was thou shalt not do it. It's not my policy. It's not our ball of us policy. It goes higher than that. Because you're conducting physical activity, your exertion rate is higher, the 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 you're moving more air in and out of your body and exhaling as you as you're doing that that physical activity and then bringing somebody within six feet of you is raising that 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 potential risk of exposure. That's why we're not going to get to yes on that until we get into a different health protection condition. So that's the spotters and it's the exact same issue with the basketball. Yes, you work together in an office and yes, you may sit at a table at at a low heart rate, low RPM with a mask on for short periods of time. And then why can't you go play basketball? It's the same reason. You're raising your heart rate, you're raising the exertion level, you're increasing your body's movement of air in and out, which is which is how we know the disease is transmitted. And so that's just not an activity that I'm going to offer us right now.
Hey, Skipper, a question, question from the chat pod. Regards to that was regards to the frag order in reference to visiting in town establishments such as restaurants. Any idea when this will be lifted?
Yeah, let me table that because I do want to talk about the transition to page 13, HBCon Bravo and the vaccinations. Don't let me forget that one, but I'm going to come back to it. So that covers the physical activity questions that we were asked. It's tied to policy. And and I got another question that says, can we get to one basketball person per basketball court to shoot hoops by themselves? So I tried that because I understand the intent of the person who asked it. And and I'm going to reach out to A1 Williams and give him the answer. That was my initial stance. So yes, I'm going to authorize that. And what happened was as soon as me or my staff or the security team wasn't watching, the rules started getting broken and basketball games started breaking up. And I'm not equipped and I'm not manned and I don't have the resources to self-police the basketball or sorry, to to monitor the the basketball courts to ensure that it's one person at a time. We tried it. We couldn't execute it in accordance with the plan. So I'm not willing to go down that road again. So that's where that is. So three questions on physical activity. So let me talk about, I got one today about softball. So the question was, hey, I hear so and so is putting together a softball game and I don't think that's fair. So two things. Any activity that happens on the base, whether it's the Go-Kart Grand Prix, whether it's planning for the festival flight, whether it's execution of drive-through religious ministry services that the chaplain proposed to me, developing a Captain's Cup sporting event that would be workable. Every single thing we do here, I look at the mechanics of how it's executed. The department head that owns that particular element puts together the plan. They come brief me. If I want some changes made, they'll go back, they'll make those changes. And then I'll either approve it that it's safe to execute in our current environment and I'll say we're just not there. It's not. It's not a safe enough activity that I'm going to authorize you to do it. And that's why you may hear some things like the go-kart. And we talked about this before the holidays that are planned, planned, planned because I wanted to do it. I wanted to do it. I wanted to do it. And we got about a week out. And I did my final execution review of the plan and it just wasn't right to do. So we canceled it. Same thing happened with a softball game. So there was a couple of tenants on base who who proposed a softball game and I said, let me look at it. And it just turned out the environment wasn't right to support that. So so they never made the official ask and I never granted the official position. So every sporting event that happens like basketball, like like that will will all get reviewed based on who it's who's asking it and whether it fits within the current posture that the basis is in. Now, two things about this. One, there's a heck of a lot of rumors and people are subscribing to bad information, jumping to jumping to things they they may be not have the full story on and are assuming that some people are getting treated differently than others. So softball is one example. It was never even an actual thing. And yet somebody got so upset by the fact that somebody was even thinking about it that they wanted to reach out directly to ensure that I knew that somebody was planning to have a softball game. Trust me, I know what's going on on the base. I appreciate you. You're looking out for everyone's safety. But all those types of activities are very closely scrutinized and none of them will get approved until I'm comfortable that the safety procedures are in place. The second thing ties to the vaccine. So as we get more and more people vaccinated on the base, I am willing to accept more and more types of activities that have closer contact between groups of people that have been vaccinated. There's no definitive policy on what that means yet, so it's very much a case by case basis. So I can't, you know, answer every little situation on this town hall. I can tell you that I will approach every query, every proposal that comes to me with the same exact perspective. What is being asked? How much risk does it entail? Where does it fit with the current policy? And is the vaccine a mitigation that I can accept that risk? So that's kind of all the CO suggestion boxes that I have. What I'd like to do at this point in time is turn it over to Doc to talk about the medical environment out in town, what we've been seeing since the New Year's. And then I will come back after that and I'll talk about what that means to us for the near term. So Lieutenant Bonian, over to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. The COVID environment has drastically improved over the last five weeks roughly. Numbers at their worst were terrible. For a reference point, the hospital admissions for COVID positive individuals was 203 at the max. That's now down into the twenties. And that is as low as we've seen in several months. The hospitals are no longer reliant on support staffing from FEMA and the state and other contracted services to absorb the load. And so the the healthcare system is no longer strained in a way that it once was, and it's not even close to near, close to a strained as max. And so we've seen a steady decline in case rate, hospital admissions and ICU admissions over the last five weeks for sure. And the data continues to trend down. Just for a reference point, at for a common metric used for measuring basically COVID burden in the given area is cases per 100,000 per week or per day, depending on how you want to look at it. At worst, Imperial County was 160 or so per 100,000 per week. We are now at 7.2. We're one of the few yellow counties in the state. We are in better shape than a lot of the surrounding counties, including those in Arizona. So we are on the path for improvement. I don't think we can can attribute it all to vaccination. The vaccination hasn't been that widely distributed yet. What I attributed to is decreased super spreader events to include holiday gatherings, the Super Bowl, stuff like that. Those high-risk scenarios have passed and it's people continuing to do the right thing. So we combine those things, those three things, absence of super spreader events, starting vaccination and people continuing infection prevention measures. That's ultimately what's contributing to the progressive decline of COVID incidents in the community. And so like Skipper, I'm sure is about to talk more on that creates better opportunity for us in terms of opening services and decreasing risk on the installation. One thing I will note is the window for prediction on how vaccination and recent COVID infection can affect a patient or a vaccinated person's movement going forward. And the Navy is kind of working on this too, is about three months. So after a person gets ill with COVID and recovers or a person gets vaccinated with the vaccine and becomes immune 14 days post-vaccination, the window The window of protection is roughly three months. And what we can. Uh, what we can operate on going forward is it, all that data for three months and then perhaps even further is coming from ongoing studies. Of people that were initially vaccinated. So those studies are ongoing and uh, when, when we can say reliably that. Oh, the, these people that have demonstrated protection over three months have now been, you know, vaccinated for six months and we still see. You know, this level of protection. So there, there's going to be changing guidance uh all the time based on what we're seeing from. Uh, those currently vaccinated and the study pools from where we got the original data. So. Uh, expect dynamic times and changing recommendations um indefinitely. Sir.
Yeah, thanks, Doc. Uh, so uh, I want to highlight that uh things are, are, are improving and they've been improving for, for quite some time. Um, there's a couple of reasons why you, you know, that, that, that feed into what, what might be, but the bottom line is it, it really doesn't matter. It's, it's good news story. Uh, as I've always said, the conditions outside the base will inform, but not necessarily dictate what we're doing on side of base. Um, so, so where we are inside the fence line is. We remain in what's called HPCon Condition Charlie. And, and all of our services that we've opened uh to date remain exclusively for active duty. Uh, with the exception of the um, the take five, which is uh lumped in with the N E X and the commissary. That's going to continue uh at least for the next couple of weeks. It takes a while to. Brief up chain uh and get the approval to move to the next stage. We are going to start that process. Um, I was talking with the uh, the Admiral staff uh this afternoon. Uh, they are ready to start receiving uh installation inputs and I'm going to make uh one of the first ones. Uh, to start the process to move to the next phase. That's going to take some time. Uh, so I need your patience. Uh, even though um, we may uh, you know, you're hearing all these good news stories. Weeks to a month or two is the earliest I see. Obtaining all the way up through the four stars approval uh and then um, and then uh, allowing um. Us to move to the next stage. So what is the next stage? Uh, it's been a while since we've talked about this. Just a quick refresher. Stage two of the uh, of the return to, to normalcy uh allows us to um expand those services that I've opened up. Up so far, uh, the gym, uh, the um, uh, single sale or that's a bad example, single sale of. The gym specifically uh, the, and the other fitness facilities. I could expand those to additional user groups. Uh, and what those user groups are is completely up to each installation's um unique situation. Uh, so you know, we'll start with um, we're still defining what those are and I'm still seeking, uh, I'm still getting the. Legal advice on, on how we can do that uh while complying with the various governing policies. Uh, but they'll expand uh and it will be something like. Um, at some point in time, uh, base civilians will be authorized. Uh, at some point in time, uh, dependents will be authorized. Uh, at some point in time, it'll be expanded all the way out to retirees uh and then back to normal. Uh, so we'll, we'll work our way through that. Um, as soon as I have those uh user groups defined and, and locked down, we'll publish what those are so you can understand. Uh, what that means to you. Uh, but I ask your patience. It's going to take some time um to, to work through that and the vaccine. And the availability of the vaccine is what's causing me to not have this done already because I had the user groups defined. Five months ago and then the, the availability of the vaccine and the number of folks uh on the base, both civilian and military. That have uh accepted the vaccine is, is nuancing the way I look at risk. Uh, so, so that's what's um, that's what's driving a little bit of that. So about the vaccine. Um, I got my last CO suggestion call that I was holding until this topic came up. Uh, I got one that was, hey, why did so-and-so get the vaccine so early? They're a civilian. It's not fair. And I think the person who, who made that comment doesn't understand the priority and the tiers. That uh, that go into um, who gets the vaccine. So unlike the flu vaccine. Where millions of doses are made available to the, to the American public and the military all at the same time. We are literally taking these out of the warehouse, putting them in a truck. Driving them to places around the country and then as fast as we can getting them into, to, to arms. So we're putting them into people's arms as fast as they're being made. Uh, there's not enough of it yet. So we had to prioritize who goes first. In the Navy, our priority is around our mission. So what are the most critical mission enablers that we have? Our first responders, our medical, our security and our firefighters. They were, they were offered the vaccine first and all of those that had volunteered uh have received their vaccine. Uh, there were a few that passed. Uh, and we are trying to uh answer their concerns, answer their questions uh and we have. Uh, I had a few of those change their mind and they've, uh, some of them have already received their first dose and some of them are, are, are going to receive their, their first dose first soon. Um, so what's next after our first responders? There's a, there's a whole list of tiers uh that uh, that are subcategorized. Um, but where we are on the base is. The things that we do that directly support our customers' mission. So and what's our customer? The, the aviation community that comes and uses the airfield. They're getting ready to go deploy. It's all about deployment. The, the Navy's number one folks after first responders are the deployers. The ones that are already out are first and the ones that are going next are second. And then what's third is the people and the skill sets that enable those next deployers to go. So folks like our air traffic controllers, folks like our housing, our NGIS housing that enables squadrons. Uh, to come here and visit and, and, and be here safely. Uh, our commissary and, and our exchange folks, uh, our child and youth programs. Those are the next kind of tier priority on the base here. Um, our emergency operations uh team so that if there's a crisis on the base, if there's a plane crash. If there's a uh, an earthquake or a major wildfire uh that, 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 that comes out and I have to stand up my emergency operations center. They need to be vaccinated so they can function without uh endangering themselves. So they're, they're in that higher tier uh on the base as well. And then we'll work our way down and, and, and catch everybody that I haven't talked about yet. So the individual that was queried about was one of those higher tiers, emergency operations center. We had some doses available. And I got my emergency operations center, a, a couple of folks done. Uh, and the person who made that, I, I don't think understood the tiers. So I wanted to explain uh what those were and, and that's okay if you didn't know. Uh, but nobody's jumping the line. Uh, nobody's um getting in front of uh, uh, other folks. Uh, we're going through it in a very methodical uh process in accordance with the guidance that's been laid out by the Navy. So that's the vaccine process. Uh, on the vaccine uh near term. I just got word this morning that we're getting a couple hundred doses sent out to us. Uh, so I'm going to be talking with the tenant commands uh, uh, officer in charge tomorrow. And we're, and I already know the names uh, who volunteered and I already know their tiers and their sub tiers and we have it locked down. Uh, but we're going to get word out to those individuals that uh coming uh real soon. Uh, a couple hundred doses are going to be coming. Um, and we're also going to try to educate uh and answer concerns from anybody in a higher tier who had deferred uh to try to get them. The more people we can take, uh, get to take the vaccine, the faster I am able to move to the next stage. Uh, and the faster we protect ourselves and the faster we as a country get out of this. So that's the vaccine. That's stage two and HBCon Bravo. I, the, the one word of caution I will say with all the good news Doc briefed to you and it's, it's great to finally hear good news coming out of Doc. Instead of doom and gloom. Don't let your foot off the gas. You must continue to do the daily. Individual health protection measures. Keeping your distance from others uh that are outside your household, wearing your mask. Doing a daily screen, answering and verbalizing the response to the questions every single day. Don't come to work if you're not, if you shouldn't be at work, if you answered no, uh, sorry, if you answered yes to any of those questions. Uh, or, or if you feel sick, go home. Don't take the risk of infecting anybody else. Um, and when the vaccine is offered to you, I implore you to take it. Um, I was one of those that was uh, uh, early go because of the emergency operations and the crisis management role that I fulfill. Um, I have been through dose one and dose two. I had very few side effects. I was tired after the second one. Uh, but within about twenty-four hours, I was back to normal and went on a thirty-mile bike ride. There's a lot of bad information out there in the internet that have convinced people that they're scared of the vaccine. And we will uh spend as much time educating you, answering any questions you have uh to help you. Uh, get to, to volunteer status. Um, so that's what I wanted to talk about, about COVID, moving on, uh, the vaccine and, and where things are. Before I get into my last topic, does, I wanted to pause here and answer any questions that came up in chat. Uh, or if anybody has any questions um from listening in, over.
I, I think you answered that question and I'll reread it again, but I'm pretty sure it's in certain regards to the frag order in reference to visiting at town establishments. Such as restaurants, any idea when this will be lifted? And I believe uh, your answer basically was as the. Environment chooses out town and we're able to change ours. Big Navy will start basically adjusting their policies appropriately.
You're right, but I forgot the nuance on the fraggo. So it's not final yet. They're doing some test cases out in Hawaii. Uh, they're doing a test case in uh San Diego for a couple of units. Um, but what's coming very soon is if you take the vaccine, the fraggo will go away. So I would offer that if that helps your calculus on whether or not you will take the vaccine. Um, hopefully that will get to you, yes, and that will allow you to visit uh restaurants and do some of those things that are currently prohibited by policy. If we get to HBCon Bravo, the fraggo also goes away unless you're traveling. To an area that is a higher risk area and then some of those things uh to protect you may, may get enacted. Um, but uh, but that'll be handled as part of your leave review uh process. Um. So that, yeah, thanks for reminding me. I did, I forgot to discuss the fraggo, but I meant to at that point in time. And again, the fraggo uh and, and, and it's tied up in our base orders as well. Same, it's a reiteration of the same thing. Uh, applies to everybody in uniform uh and I strongly, strongly request anybody that's a civilian or dependent to abide by. That same policy because it, it protects us all.
Uh, also a comment you made. A comment earlier me where we mentioned tenants about decision-making, uh emphasized. Uh, that also that applies to all of our transients that are out here. We refer to them as, as tenants at times too, depending on their. Their size of the unit. So anytime they uh go into making the decision-making, if they want any kind of team building, et cetera. Uh, just to let everyone know all of their, all of their decision or requests are, are filtered through the front office as well.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Matthew. Thank you. And uh, and, and for those who are not aware, um, every transient tenant. Also, we have our permanent tenants that live here. Um, and we have transient squadrons that, that roll through for training. Um, I meet with every one of their leadership uh and, and we discuss COVID, especially if they're coming from an area where the rules aren't as strict as I have here. Uh, and I make sure that they understand them and then we go around and check to make sure that they're doing those things. Uh, so um. There's a process in place to, to ensure that they're not bringing any risk to our base uh while they're here training. We're supporting them. But it also leads into something I forgot to cover earlier. There's a perception out there that um. That, that, that those, that those squadrons get whatever they want. And, and that is a faulty perception. Um, including the Blue Angels. A, a, and everybody loves the Blue Angels and everybody thinks the base bends over for the Blue Angels. Um, I have said no numerous occasions to things that, that they, they've asked for, uh, to include some team building events. Uh, to include some other things and, and their CEO, boss, boss G and I talk about risk and he's working very closely with us. To protect his team, to protect you on the base here, um, and to ensure that they can get after their mission. Uh, but they've all taken their vaccine. Uh, I think he had a hundred and twenty-six doses uh a few weeks ago. Uh, because of their mission and their requirements and their interaction with the public, uh, it was necessary for them to be high up on the Navy's list. Uh, and that's been taken care of. Um, so I am starting to have conversations with boss on what is safe and appropriate. For his unit that is fully vaccinated and immunized to be able to do safely. And uh, and, and uh, that may be leading to some of this uh false perception. There's another false perception about the gym and the Blue Angels. Um, there are seven people that are authorized additional gym access that, that the rest of the folks don't have. Those seven people are the pilots. It's not the rest of Blue Angels. It's not the maintainers. It's not their yeoman and admin support staff. It's the seven pilots. That go out and fly three times a day and pull seven Gs in their aircraft. And it's because they are mandated from an aviation physiological perspective uh to be able to lift weights uh or not to, they're mandated to do it. Six days a week uh to ensure that their body is prepared so that they don't blackout when they're flying those aircraft and pulling those IGs. Uh, their, their day, daily schedule didn't line up with um the hours that we had in the gym. Uh, so I uh approved a, a one-time oh uh use-only thing for those seven pilots. Uh, and nobody else. And uh, so um, again, it goes back to everything that happens on the base. I look at it from a risk perspective. Uh, and how can we manage that, you know, alignment with policy? Uh, that's one exception to policy that I did grant. But it's not a marine squadron that rolls through. It's not uh a Navy squadron that's out of um Lemoore or, or North Island. And it's not the entirety of the Blue Angels and it's not the Thunderbirds. Uh, Thunderbird one and I talked yesterday about this exact thing. And he does not have the same requirement. So he was not granted the same exception to policy that I did for the Blue Angel pilots. Uh, so um, again, I think it's a little bit of misunderstanding and that's okay. We'll have these conversations to address everyone's concerns. Uh, but I care very much about the um, the, the care and wellbeing of, of all the families uh who live here. Why did I make the gym open on Saturday? People think it's for the Blue Angels and it's, it's, it's just the wrong narrative. Um, I asked the gym four months ago to come up with a plan to get Saturday hours. Because I thought we were close around Thanksgiving time to get an HBCon Bravo and I wanted the gym ready to go so I could get families in there. The environment didn't work out that way and I wasn't able to pull the trigger on, on, on expanding the use. Uh, but the reason I moved the gym to Saturday hours was so I could get the families. Uh, and so we're ready for that. It was not for a squadron. Uh, and we're going to keep it there. Um, because I think we're pretty close. Okay, any other questions pop up on COVID or um, or, or uh HBCon or anything, uh vaccines or anything?
Nothing in the chat pod, but uh feel free to unmute yourself if you have a question.
Okay, I'll go on to my last topic and, and I'll stay on for a few seconds afterwards if, if any uh, questions did come up. What's going on with the festival flight? It all ties into what I've been talking about. What is the COVID environment? What is the environment off-base? Where are we on-base? Where are you with our vaccination plan? And um, and where's the Navy policy? So we're executing a festival flight. I've been saying that. That's been my goal the whole time. We do have live acts coming uh and they will be flying uh events over the airfield, just like they did today. Uh, what you saw today and yesterday is probably more than we're going to have uh on the day of. Um, and that's what got me to yes is, is the risk that we, we can work this down to the same risk we have today or Saturday. Um, uh, versus March thirteenth when we do the festival. It is going to be a virtual festival. So what the heck does that mean? I'm not going to authorize the general public to come onboard the base. We're not there. Uh, the numbers are getting better out in town uh and by March thirteenth, they might be great, but I'm not going to change course at this time. And make a last second decision. We are where we are. I've talked with the uh Imperial County CEO. Uh, he's comfortable. I've talked with the uh, the mayor and the town uh manager, city manager of, of our local towns. We're all comfortable with where we are um for a virtual airshow. Uh, we're working on what that means, how we're providing you. Uh, more information is going to come out on how you can watch it virtually. Um, we are uh, uh, just like we do a drive-in movie. Uh, we're going to have a drive-in style uh viewing option for those that live on base. And more information is going to be coming out about that. But it's going to be handled the same way we do today. We got a drive-in movie coming up on Saturday. The same policy we use to keep you safe for that is the same policy that I'm going to use uh on the day of the festival. Uh, for a small number of uh folks that, that live and work aboard. Uh, but again, we're keeping the public off. Um, and we uh, we got a good plan, uh, briefed my uh, my boss on, on how we're going to work this. Uh, and everyone uh understands the risks that are there, understands the Navy policy and understands the mitigations that we put in place to protect everybody. Uh, so we got a green light to execute. Um, so that's where we are with the festival. Uh, more information on the specifics of how you can enjoy this festival virtually will be coming out uh very soon. Uh, but thirteen March, um, we're going to, we're going to have an event. So we're, we're very happy and are very thankful for everybody that's been working for the last six months on, on how do we get there safely. So that was my last topic. I will stand by for any questions anybody has. Uh, otherwise, we are going to record this. Uh, and if something does pop up, uh, feel free to shoot uh, either a CO suggestion box or shoot a query into our public affairs officer. Uh, and we'll get a question uh answered if, if any of these topics uh popped up for those who are watching a recording uh vice, uh, vice soon. Um, with that, over to you CMC. Uh, are we able to see how many people logged in? Uh, does Zoom tell us that?
There was a twenty-four participants uh which included uh, you know, obviously our, our speakers that we asked for tonight. So. Uh, thank you, everybody that has joined us. A few reminders uh before opening the floor. Uh, March ninth, there's going to be a Culture of Excellence Family Workshop. Uh, March ninth, there's going to be a culture of excellence family workshop, uh I'll promulgate that information out for the families. Uh, culture excellence workshop is basically an opportunity for all the op nav Navy programs uh to kind of give a quick spiel about uh where we are uh in today's Navy, what what the program policies are, etc. From the family's perspective of it, uh in this workshop will be uh about an hour and a half, two hours uh for you to log on or off as you as you choose using Adobe Connect uh on the internet, uh but it is not just for our base, uh the op nav folks that are putting it on are doing it for the entire Pacific Fleet, so it'll be basically all the West Coast squatters uh or commands will be able to to log on and come as you as you want to listen in on it, so more information will be pushed out out for that. Uh, also, if you haven't seen our flyers already for uh, we're having a little anniversary coming up on uh May first, kind of a big deal. Seventy-fifth anniversary, so uh what our MWR team has put together is called uh uh seventy-five miles and seventy-five days and uh the event is a a a virtual run that we're asking you to log seventy-five miles, so if you do a mile a day for for seventy-five days. Uh, sign up to your event, the event has been extended. Uh, correct me XO, I think you got pushed out another week, right?
Correct.
Yep, alright, so uh you basically have until the end of next week to sign up for it. Uh, I believe roughly it's about twenty dollars for military, but for the price, you get a seventy-fifth anniversary T-shirt and a finisher's medal. Uh, and there's also an option to buy a seventy-fifth anniversary collector's coin uh that we designed for the base as well, so it's a good deal, you support the NVR programs, if you're out walking about a mile every day, might as well log it and do it. Uh, the other one is uh our thrift shop, we'll be looking to open back up again. Uh, but until we do, we ask it to hold fast on making any donations right now. Uh, we're overwhelmed on how many donations we have gotten uh that I'm waiting for my volunteers, which leaves me my next option. If you're interested in volunteering at the thrift shop, please uh drop me a, drop me an email at eric dot hubert at Navy dot mil. Uh, if you're interested in volunteering or I'm also looking for uh somebody if they want to step up to be uh one of my store managers. Uh, and again, last plug for dumpster days. Uh, will be March twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth and the dumpster actually will be set up over in a thrift shop park lot across from building two fourteen. Uh, so I've rambled enough, thank you so much, so with that uh, please uh feel free to unmute yourself if you have a question for uh any of our panel members tonight.
And I want to thank our guest speakers, Doc, uh Matt and Janie, I appreciate you joining us.
You're welcome, sir.
It's a pleasure, thank you.
No, uh, no questions from the group? Okay, reminder, we are going to record, uh the session was recorded tonight, we'll be uh up, I'm here for you back myself, okay, no worries, uh it will be posted to our Facebook page either later on tonight or tomorrow, so please, if you have somebody in your department or tenant command, did you get any chance to chime in tonight to uh, that's going to please check out our Facebook page.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
All right, have a great night, stay safe.